I can ask everybody to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, in the legal and legislative interest of our.
I'll ask the clerk to call a call of the meeting.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counsel Avazaneda. Counsel Rodriguez.
Here.
Counsel Lopez.
Here.
Counsel Brown.
Here.
Counsel Perlottanda.
Here.
Counsel Tihada.
Present.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Counsel Bishop.
Present.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow. Ten members present, chairman, you have a call.
I'll ask the clerk to call for the call of the meeting.
Dear Honorable Counsel Members, please be advised that City Council Senior Member Leo Robertson has called for a special organizational meeting on January 7, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council chambers for the following reasons. Salute to the flag, roll call of members. Nomination for President, nomination for Vice President, nomination of delegate to the School Committee, acceptance of the roll call, acceptance of the seating formation, and acceptance of the 2018 Rules and Regulations for Governance of 2019, also full agenda items.
I'll need a motion to accept the call of the meeting. Counsel Bishop moves to accept the call of the meeting under suspension, I see no objections, so move. First, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I hope this will be the year of respect and unity. The first order of business will be, I'll open up the floor for nominations for the President of the Council.
I nominate Counsel Vido for President.
Can I get a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. And at this time, I move to close nominations.
All nominations for President.
When I call your name, just call out the name of the person for President. Counselor Garcia.
Counselor Demali Vido.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counsel Avazaneda, absent. Counsel Rodriguez.
And Demali Vido.
Counsel Lopez.
Counselor Demali Vido.
Counsel Brown.
Counsel Divo.
Counsel Perlottanda.
Counsel Vido.
Counsel Tihada.
Counsel Vido.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Vido.
Counsel Bishop.
Counsel Vido.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow.
Counsel Vido.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine votes for Counsel Vido, one absent, one present. Counselor Demali Vido is your President for 2019.
I'd ask the Counsel to come forward, and if we could have Assistant City Clerk come forward.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, please.
I, Demali Vido.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As City Council President.
As City Council President.
For the City of Chelsea.
For the City of Chelsea.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Understanding.
Understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
The Constitution.
To the Constitution.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances of the City of Chelsea.
And the ordinances of the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yay!
Congratulations.
Good luck. We have a lot of work to do, so I just want to keep this very short. I just want to thank all of my colleagues for entrusting me for one more year in serving as your leader of the Council. It is the first time in history that a woman has served two back-to-back terms as City Council President, and I am ever so honored to represent this community, to work alongside people that genuinely care about this community, and with our city manager and administration. So, let's keep going, because we have work to do. Next, we'll like to open for nominations for Vice President.
I nominate Louis Tejada for Vice President.
Counsel Tejada for Vice President. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Counsel Robinson, seconds. Can I have a clue?
You want to close them?
Make sure the rest of the nominations be closed for Vice President.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, roll call.
By name, please. Counselor Garcia.
Counsel Louis Tejada.
Counsel Vido.
Counsel Louis Tejada.
Counsel Avazaneda, absent. Counsel Rodriguez.
Louis Tejada.
Counsel Lopez.
Counsel Louis Tejada.
Counsel Brown.
Counsel Tejada.
Counsel Perlottanda.
Counsel Tejada.
Counsel Tihada.
Present.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Tihada.
Counsel Bishop.
Counsel Jada.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow.
Counsel Louis.
Tihada. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine votes for Counsel Tihada, none opposed, one absent, and one present. Counsel Tihada is your Vice President for 2019.
Tejada, will you? Louis, will you come up here so you can be solemn? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, please.
I, Louis Tejada.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me. As City Council Vice President.
As City Council Vice President.
For the City of Chelsea.
For the City of Chelsea.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
My understanding.
My understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
That's right. And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances of the City of Chelsea.
And the ordinances of the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yay! Congratulations. And at this time, we'll accept nominations for the delegate to the School Committee. Counsel Garcia.
I nominate Counselor Jamir Rodriguez.
Can I have a second by Counsel Tejada?
Move the close of nominations.
Counsel Robinson moves to close nominations, and now, roll call.
Counselor Garcia.
Counselor Jamir Rodriguez.
Counsel Vido.
Counsel Jamir Rodriguez.
Counsel Avazaneda, absent. Counsel Rodriguez.
Present.
Counsel Lopez.
Counsel Jamir Rodriguez.
Counsel Brown.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Counsel Perlottanda.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Counsel Tihada.
Counsel Jamir Rodriguez.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Counsel Bishop.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Nine votes for Counsel Rodriguez for delegate to the School Committee, none opposed, one absent, one present. Counsel Rodriguez is your delegate to the School Committee.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, please.
I, Jamir Rodriguez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As delegate to the School Committee.
As delegate to the School Committee.
For the City of Chelsea.
For the City of Chelsea.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of the City of Chelsea.
And the ordinances of the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yay! Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, what's the next order of business?
You'll accept a motion to adopt the roll call positions.
Counsel Bishop.
I move that the rules for the 2018 City Council be the rules for the 2019 City Council, until such time as the Rules and Ordinance Committee wishes to change them.
Okay.
And I move that under suspension.
Seeing no objections, so moved.
Seating position?
Seating position. Counsel Garcia.
I move seating positions as drawn at the December 17, 2018 Subcommittee Meeting, roll call.
By roll call?
By roll call.
Okay.
If there are no objections.
Yes would be to accept. Let's see, Judy Garcia, seats. Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avazaneda, absent. Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlottanda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihada.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. The seating is accepted.
And, I think there's one.
One more out there?
One more, I think it's Counsel Robinson.
The roll call?
I assume they will go roll call. Yeah, I move to adopt the roll call position as drawn.
At the December 17, 2018 Subcommittee Meeting, on a roll call vote.
On a roll call vote.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avazaneda, absent. Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlottanda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihada.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
And Counsel Ray Cooperrow.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. The roll call positions have been approved.
Is that it?
Yep.
That's it for the organizational?
No, we'll go to the regular.
All right, so that's it for the organizational portion of the meeting, and now we'll move on to the regular meeting.
The regular order of business, okay, the regular order of business is memorials and celebratory resolutions. The first resolution introduced by Counsel Robinson and all members of the Council. Whereas the late Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was a leader of great courage and skill who became known as a drum major of the American Civil Rights Movement to enfranchise black citizens, and whereas Dr. King's life was tragically cut short by an assassin's bullet in April of 1968 in Memphis, Tennessee, while he was there to champion the cause of underprivileged workers, and whereas due to the efforts of many dedicated people who believed Dr. King deserves national recognition, the third Monday in January is nationally recognized as the day to remember Dr. King, his legacy and the causes for which he so gallantly fought and died, and whereas Massachusetts had the privilege of Dr. King's presence where he lived and studied in Boston at Boston University School of Divinity, receiving his PhD in 1953, whereas Dr. King's life will always shine as a light for those without hope and as an example to be emulated by all who care about their fellow human beings, regardless of race, religion, class, or nationality, now therefore be resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby recognize January 21, 2019, as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Chelsea, and ask all citizens to reflect upon the significance of this extraordinary man's life.
Counsel Robinson.
I adopt the unanimous, if there's no objections.
Seeing none, would you like to speak on it or anything?
No.
Okay. Next order of business?
The next resolution introduced by Counsel Robinson, all members of the Council. Whereas Hazel Walter Zalinski Els, born on March 17, 1919, in Chelsea, Massachusetts, will be celebrating her 100th birthday with her family and friends, and whereas Hazel was married to the late George Zalinski on December 28, 1936, and had three children, Patricia Zalinski Middleton, the late George F. Zalinski, and Eileen Zalinski Bradley, and whereas Hazel on May 21, 1951, married the late John A. Els, and whereas Hazel was a sister to William E. Walters, Edith Walters, Red Zewitz, Alfred Walters, and Samuel Walters, and whereas Hazel enjoys her grandchildren David Michael and James Middleton, William Bradley and Shane and Wade Zalinski, her great-grandchildren Laura Middleton, Shayanna Zalinski, and Maggie and Max Bradley, and her great-great-grandchildren Aubrey Middleton, Jamison, and Charisma Zalinski, and whereas Hazel Walter Zalinski Els was an accomplished student and made many wedding gowns, bridesmaids' gowns, and Chelsea High School prom gowns, worked for many years at the Goddess Bra Company in East Boston, and was a member of the United garment Workers Union, now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the citizens of Chelsea, we the members of Chelsea City Council wish you Hazel Walter Zalinski Els a very happy 100th birthday, and may you have many more.
Counsel Robinson.
I move to adopt this unanimously under suspension, if there are no objections.
Public speaking, public speaking, anybody that... Oh, I'm so sorry, before we open it up for public speaking, Counsel Brown.
Thank you, ma'am. I want to thank Counsel Robinson for bringing this resolution to the floor. It's not every day that you get to wish someone a happy 100th birthday, so I want to wish her a happy 100th birthday. Don't want to say I want to wish you many, many more, but I do want to wish you many more days ahead, many more birthdays. It's awesome that you can really speak on behalf of someone that's been around for that long and still with us in the midst here, and seen so much, seen so much, what we read about, what we're here to learn, and what we try to improve on over the last 10 decades, so wish you a well-deserved piece of cake, ice cream, and a good time with your family and friends. Happy birthday.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Public speaking. Anybody that wishes to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you have four minutes.
Hi, Charleston Pulse, 91 Memorial Park Ave. So, you know, you guys know our faces. We just wanted to give you guys a huge thank you for everything that you did to make your dreams happen with having out your graduation, and honestly, we put so much hard work into this, and for it to actually happen is amazing, and so, we want this achievement to be a memory to us, so we're asking if you guys can sign this, because we have the votes where everyone said yes to us, so, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the signatures go around, I also have some words to say. I am incredibly thankful, once we started this movement, which was at the end of our junior year, we didn't really think we would make it this far. We thought we would go to one of the meetings at the school board, and that would be it, but that didn't turn out to be the answer, so we ended up really persevering of all this, to all this, and I gotta say, I am really proud of everything that happened, I am really happy, I am really thankful and grateful for just really being able to presence all of this, and really being able to call this a success, and for that, we made a thank you note from the Chelsea High School students. We wrote a statement in which we express our gratefulness to the City Council, as well as other people who contributed, and also, we had some students sign it, so we would like to give you this to the City Council, to show you that the same way we want your signatures to have a memory, we are also leaving a memory for you guys from ourselves.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl.
Hi, my name is Sarah Carrato, on 8/34 Broadway. Once again, thank you guys so much for helping us out and for being a great support system. Honestly, we couldn't have done it without you guys. It brings back memories of sitting in Ms. Asher's classroom during the last week of A-Push, and Julio coming in to talk about the city, and that really was the first day where all of this came together, and we thought, we want to make a change after Julio came, and we know what problems can we do, what can we solve, and we thought of graduation, and ever since then, it's been forward, so it's really amazing to be here and know that thanks to you guys, and thanks to Julio and Ms. Asher for, you know, lighting that spark in us, and at the end, having it, you know, be a reality, so thank you guys so much. And if you wouldn't mind, we would like a picture with all of you guys in the front. I don't know if you guys can come up in the front. Thank you.
Let's finish public speaking though first. Anybody else for public speaking?
I only have one thing to say, which is directed toward Madam President. I want to thank you on behalf of formerly voiceless people like me for everything you've done, and I specifically want to thank you for all the times you couldn't go on but did. And so, Ray Moss.
No more speakers, call a recess.
Any, anybody else for public speaking? Going once, going twice? I'm gonna call a short recess, so we can take a picture with our future leaders of Chelsea. Accept and file. Approval of the minutes?
Accept and file, minutes, a suspension.
Counsel Tejada most accept and file the minutes. Thank you.
Communications from the city manager, we have a communication pursuant to the Administrative Code Section 112.02, I'm writing a notify of my intention to hire Ms. Nicole E. Janey, 48B Lafayette Place Salem, Massachusetts, for the position of E-911 dispatcher, and to grant her a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in Administrative Code Part 4, Section 112.01. Ms. Janey has considerable dispatching experience, a copy of Ms. Janey's resume is attached. In accordance with Section 112.02, I request that you provide me with any comments on a proposed waiver within seven days.
Can I have a motion?
Move to accept and file a communication under suspension.
Our communications are petitions to the Council. We have a copy of a communication received from Reverend Andrew T. Grillick and all parishioners of St. Stanislaus Parish, expressing gratitude for the reversal of the traffic direction on Chestnut Street.
Move to accept and file.
Counsel Bishop moves to accept and file under suspension.
First, second reading, order introduced by Counsel Robinson, ordered that pursuant to Section 4.3 of the Chelsea City Charter, Chelsea City Council hereby approves the cost items set forth on both the stipulated award dated November 8, 2018, in the matter of Local 93 New England Police Benevolent Association, and City of Chelsea for the periods July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, and July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020, and memorandum of agreement dated November 2, 2018, by and between the New England Police Benevolent Association, Inc., Local 98, and the City of Chelsea for the periods July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, and July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020.
Counsel Robinson.
I move to adopt this on a roll call vote, if there are no objections.
Seeing none. What's the second one? Should they go to the other?
No.
Okay.
Let me see, Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avazaneda, absent. Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlottanda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihada.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, motion adopted. Second order introduced by Counsel Robinson, ordered that to fund the collective bargaining agreements negotiated with the police superior officers in New England Police Benevolent Association, Inc., Local 98, and the police patrol officers, New England Police Benevolent Association, Local 93, for fiscal years 2017, 18, and 19. The Chelsea City Council authorizes the transfer of $700,000 from the salary reserve account to the FY 2019 Police Department salaries account, and further authorize the appropriation of $176,000 from the general stabilization account fund to the FY 2019 Police Department salaries account.
Counsel Robinson.
I move to adopt on a roll call vote, if there are no objections.
Seeing none.
On the motion.
On the motion. Sure.
I just want to point out that the city manager stated in the previous meeting that we had that he would be replacing that money in the general stabilization fund, once the free cash is certified, and I just wanted to make that clear to the members, that even though there is $176,000 being taken out of there for this contract, that it will be replaced with free cash, assuming that it's fair to apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avazaneda, absent. Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlottanda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihada.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, the motion is adopted. New business. First order under new business, order introduced by Counsel Robinson, ordered that the Subcommittee on Conference be held with the Chelsea School Committee to discuss the process for the selection of superintendent of schools.
Counsel Robinson.
Shenanigans will be under suspension, and if I may, I'll be brief.
Yeah, you have the floor.
Actually, I went before the school committee last Thursday night to explain to them that I was interested in having a conference to talk about the process. It is a school committee decision, we have no say in the matter, but I thought it would be appropriate to get together and talk about process. Actually, they're having a meeting on Thursday night at the Clark School to talk about the process, and if anybody would like to attend, it's open to the public.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next order introduced by Counsel Ray Cooperrow. We brought that one. And what about the next one, the Traffic and Parking Commission looking to put in residential parking? We were doing that one too, okay. We have an order introduced by Counsel Perlottanda, ordered that the Traffic and Parking Commission putting a sign up stating no parking closer to corner posted at the corner Clinton Street and Eastern Abbey side, Eastern Autobody.
Counselor Perlottanda.
I'd like to adopt under suspension and speak on it, please.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
With the new traffic lights that were just put into effect on Broadway, Eastern Clinton Street, right by the Walgreens there, it seems like when people are taking a right-hand turn onto Clinton Street by the Eastern Autobody, and people taking a left turn there if they're stopped at the light coming out of Clinton Street, makes it kind of difficult for cars to go through there, with cars parked close to the curb there by Clinton and Eastern Avenue. So I'm requesting that we put a sign there close to the corner there, so when people make the turn, they won't think they're gonna slam into a car that's parked there. so when people make the turn, they won't think they're going to slam into a car that's parked there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next order introduced by Council Ray Cooperow. Now therefore be it ordained that the revised code of ordinances of the City of Chelsea as amended be further amended and adopted as follows. Delete paragraph C in its entirety of Section 2-61, so that the ordinance now reads as follows. Section 2-61 Residency for Chelsea Police Department and Chelsea Fire Department Civil Service Employees. A. Notwithstanding any administrative order to the contrary, all police and fire department civil service personnel hired after April 1, 2018, who live in Chelsea at the time of hire, shall maintain residency in the city of Chelsea for a period of five years from the date of hire. Any employee who fails to maintain such residency during this period shall be subject to immediate termination. B. For any police or fire civil service employee hired after April 1, 2018, who at the time of hiring pursuant to civil service rules is not at such time a resident of the city of Chelsea, such employee shall have six months on which to relocate to Chelsea. For such employees, the five-year period of residency shall commence on the date of relocation to Chelsea. Any such employee fails to relocate to Chelsea within this initial six-month period or fails to maintain such residency during the ensuing five years shall be subject to immediate termination.
Council Ray Cooperow.
I'd like to adopt under suspension. If there's no objection. On the roll call, I'd like to speak.
Will you please?
This is just what we voted on. What it says is, you have to live here.
It needs two readings?
Go ahead. No, it doesn't matter. You can do, you can adopt it now.
Okay. Sorry, Counselor. We were just trying to clarify if you needed a second reading, but you have the floor.
This just clarifies and says what we voted on. And when they get hired, they have to live here for five years. That's all this says. It mandates that they live here. Regardless of what it is, they have to stay here for five years. That ensures that they have to live here. That's all this does. Nothing is different to what we did. This just says that they have to live here.
Roll call.
Move to roll call. Somebody else want to speak? On it, Council Robinson.
I don't know if you took into consideration that if there are elderly parents living in another community, and that they might have to move in with them to take care of the parents.
Let's not debate. Let's just.
No.
Is that all, Council Robinson?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Councilor Garcia.
It's possible.
An amendment, or is it something that? I'm confused. You keep saying that this is something we already voted on. So are you amending something? What is?
There's an amendment that says, because on the original order that we did, there was something there that said that they can wait, could be waived. They could come in front of the City Council, and the City Council could waive it. Ninety-nine percent of the time, if a policeman or firefighter comes in front of the City Council with something, the City Council is going to tell them yes. So that eliminates what we did, because.
Yes.
This just says, what it does is, make sure that they have to live here for five years.
Council Ray Cooperow, yes, it's an amendment. The way that it was written, it wasn't, you know, so specific. So it was vague, so we're hammering it down.
Great. Thank you. That clarifies it.
Anybody else want to speak on this?
But point of information, it stayed in the original order that it was in there, and that's how it read.
I believe.
But we're correcting it.
Yeah, exactly. Did you have something to say, Cheryl? No?
No.
No, yeah.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilor Garcia.
Yes.
Council Vido.
Yes.
Council Abiseneta Absen, Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Lopez.
Yes.
Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Perlottanda.
Yes.
Council Tejada.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
No.
Council Bishop.
Yes.
Council Ray Cooperow.
Yes.
Nine in favor, one opposed, one absent. Motion is adopted. We have the financial orders introduced by Council Bishop.
Want to go over each one?
Well, we have six of them. Can we do one of these?
Can we do one roll call for all six?
Just go into a second reading.
Oh, okay, yeah. Just specify which ones.
Well, there are six on the capital improvement, and these are transfers. They're not appropriations. It's transferring unused funds from capital improvement projects and moving them into where the money is needed now for existing capital improvement programs.
So it's F to K.
F to K, second reading?
Second reading.
Move to a second reading. F to K.
Move them all to a second reading.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Counselor.
Now we have the order introduced by Council Bishop. Order that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, Budget Management Procedures, whereby costs incurred in FY 16 were not paid and are owed to the vendor, and to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current FY 19 budget. The City Council authorizes the expenditure of $2,139.17 from the School Department expenditure line to satisfy the unpaid translation service balance to Catholic Charities of Boston from the prior.
Council Bishop.
I move, well, can I move them all to a second reading?
Yeah. Yeah, move it to a second reading.
There's.
It remains.
When you say all.
All second readings. Four of them, they'll go to a second reading on the 28th.
All right, so that's it?
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Beautiful. That's it? Public announcements? Council Ray Cooperow.
I'd like to congratulate my son on having a baby boy.
Speaking to the mic.
I'd like to congratulate my son, Francesco Ray Cooperow, for having a baby boy.
Congratulations to you, Counselor. Anybody else for public announcements? No? Going once, going twice? All right, welcome everybody to the first of the year. There'll be many more meetings to come, but we're ending this one early, so let's go catch that Celtics game. Meeting adjourned.